We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. Doesn't look like we didn't have anyone sign up to address the board, did we, Vicki? Okay. We'll move on to approval. The minutes of the meetings, October 6th and November 2nd. Do you have a motion? Oh, that's supposed to be just October 6th. Oh, for the hearing. It should be hearing, yeah, not minutes. Okay. So, November 2nd, do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Onto approval agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Tied.
Second.
Have motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Onto conflicts of interest. We did not have any new conflicts presented. Onto consent agenda. Items 7A through C. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That carries. Onto the reports of the president. First, we have STC Day.
Good afternoon. Phoenisha Foster, Dean of Curriculum and Instruction. I'd like to introduce you to Kristen Wellness. She is a psychology instructor on our campus, but the past probably year now, she has led our civic engagement initiative. And so what we have called is STC Days and playing on our name with service to community. And we had a great event last Thursday and Friday, which is going to give you an update on what was accomplished and what we did.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. My name is Kristen Wellness and as stated, my primary role is psychology instructor. But last year, I started taking on an active role as civic engagement coordination on campus. This past week, Southeast Tech had the opportunity to celebrate Service to Community Days, or what we call STC Days. As a campus, we focused on four organizations that we could provide various forms of community service to. Program areas were also able to reach out to organizations on their own, excuse me, to other organizations. Various program areas, classes, individual students and employees, all took part in service work. Here's a recap of what occurred last week. So, we had of our four organizations, one of them was Feeding South Dakota. So, we had four groups show up on location at the Feeding South Dakota warehouse, and they each group served for one and a half hours. Students and employees assisted in boxing food, sorting food, packing backpacks, counting out turkeys, and breaking down and sealing boxes. They concluded each session with a tour of the facility. At the banquet, we signed up to prepare and serve the evening meal on Thursday at the Banquet West on the west side of the city. And in the end, we ended up preparing and serving 96 meals to individuals and families that evening. We also signed up for Rake the Town, which is a part of the Workers on Wheels through the Center of Active Generations. And through this organization, we signed up for four houses to rake and haul away the leaves. And then we were recruited by a fifth house by a gentleman driving by who had recently had hip replacement surgery. So, in all of the houses we signed up to rake, we hauled away 131 bags of leaves. And then additionally, today, our HVAC students went out into houses that had been raked by other organizations, but maybe didn't have trucks to haul away the leaves. They did another 18 residences of houses to the tree dump today. And then one of the other ones was Church on the Street. So, we partnered with Church on the Street to prepare sandwiches to be delivered downtown to those in need. So, I actually took one of my psych classes and we met to prepare 120 sandwiches. We sorted hygiene items and packed hygiene kits for them and assisted with a few other smaller tasks. And then we loaded up all of the food. So, Southeast Tech provided the sandwiches along with water, chips, and other snacks. And we loaded them up. And then the woman who was in charge of Church on the Street later that afternoon, met our law enforcement students and faculty downtown with a few other employees outside of the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. And they divided those food into two different wagons. And each group took half of the food and walked around to distribute it downtown to people who may have been hungry at that time. So, stops on their walks included the mission, the downtown library, the bus station, Whittier Park, and a portion of the bike trail. So, they said that was a really cool experience. And then also taking place on campus during this time is the Student Government Association's Laundry Basket Drive. And this is where students and employees can bring in hygiene items, non-perishable food, and cleaning supplies to donate. The drive concludes tomorrow. And then on Friday, they will take all of the items that have been donated and make up little baskets. And then students can either confidentially go in and request a basket for themselves if it would be helpful to them or their household. Or instructors or employees who maybe know of a student who could use one can nominate them as well. So, all of the items stay right on campus, which is really neat as well. Also, earlier this month, our sports turf students completed a community baseball field renovation in Humboldt, South Dakota. And our health programs just kicked off a Fill the Backpack campaign in conjunction with Wacom Island, her shoes, which is local to Sioux Falls. And then they are going to participate in that later this month. So, to date, we have 235 participants, including both students and employees, that have provided 418 hours of community service. And we are looking forward to an entire STC week in the spring, where we will encourage programs to tie in their initiatives to their program outcomes. So, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. In addition, I know that you guys partner with Habitat for Humanity as well and Building House. I mean, you guys are so generous with your time and your talents there at STC. So, thank you for doing that. And thank you for involving the students because I think it's a great way for them to get plugged into the community, know what's going on, and hopefully will continue that service mentality as they go out into their careers as well. So, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, when you look at some of these different organizations, as we get students who come maybe from other communities, smaller or larger, they may not be as familiar with some of the different ways that Sioux Falls has created to reach people. And so, what an awesome way for them to go with their classmates and see different opportunities within Sioux Falls that they can provide their help, whether it's, you know, something simple like raking or just contributing an item to a basket or things like that. So, I love all of the ways that you created for people to participate. No matter what their skill or what their gift might have been, there was something for everybody. And I think to look at, you know, 418 hours, that's a ton of time. That made a difference to a lot of people. And so, it's exciting to watch it grow, especially like you said, in the spring with maybe some new initiatives and new organizations and making them program-specific. That helps those students to really see how the work that they're doing or going to be doing can actually be impacting, you know, people in the future too. So, thank you so much for your work.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Do you have a motion to acknowledge the STC Day report?
So moved.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor of the acknowledgement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Next is land surveying, science, civil engineering, architectural technology, mechanical engineering, and technology program.
President Mickelson, maybe if I could interject, I just wanted to recognize while Kristen Wellness is here, the outstanding work she's done not only last year but this year in any large initiative like this. It's a campus effort, as you can see from the number of hours, but it really needs somebody with the passion to carry that through. And I received, actually, Phoenisha and I received an email from a business faculty member. And I thought I would, with your permission, just like to read it to the board because I think it sums up her energy and effort that went into coordinating that day. It just said, "I'd like to give a shout out to Kristen Wellness. Not only did she work tirelessly to ensure this day was coordinated and went off without a hitch, but I don't think she rested one time during this entire event. She started early in the morning at Feeding South Dakota, then went on to Church on the Street, then helped at the raking, and then at the evening in the banquet. I honestly cannot stress enough how much effort and heart she puts into these events. STC is lucky to have her, and I wholeheartedly agree. So, thank you."
Thank you.
All right. Another introduction for you. I'd like to introduce you to our engineering team. We have our land surveying, science program represented by Rod Breitling, our civil engineering program with Beth Cassing, architectural engineering with Brett Grinkmeyer. Look, they even stood in order. And our mechanical engineering with Mark Schmidt. And so, they're going to provide you an update on what their programs look like and some of the learning that happens there.
President Mickelson and board members, thank you for allowing us to present to you today. We're just going to go through each of these programs kind of quickly, but if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to ask us. The land surveying, science, and the civil engineering technology programs are very closely related. And so, we're going to discuss those programs together. Like Phoenisha, like Dean Foster said, my name is Elizabeth Cassing, and I'm the Civil Engineering Technology Advisory Board Member.
Yeah, my name is Rod Breitling, and I'm the Land Surveying Science Advisor. Who are students? Who are our students? We have, for all three of these, we have traditional students, we have transfer students, and we have non-traditional students. And it varies from year to year. Some years, we have a majority of transfer students. And some of these students are students with already four-year degrees. One year, we even had a group that had four students with baccalaureate degrees already. Our students come from Iowa, Minnesota, South Dakota, Nebraska, you know, and we are in the southeast corner of the state, which lends to, we do get a lot of students from Minnesota. Sometimes about 25% of the program. And it seems like every year, we do have non-traditional students. So, seeking a difference or a career move or something on that area.
So, the Civil Engineering Technology Program really focuses on five main areas. And that is true even at SDSU or the School of Mines, anywhere that you go. And so, the areas are transportation, any type of transportation, so airports, railroads, roadways, obviously. Geotechnical has to do with the soils and how they react. Environmental, which is water and wastewater. And then structural and water resources, which is really anything to do with rainwater. So, that's kind of the areas that we focus on on the civil side.
On the land surveying side, it's very high-tech. It's a very high-tech industry profession. And so, we spend a lot of time on fundamentals of just surveying equipment, how to survey, learning how to use the fundamental equipment and the high-tech equipment. High-tech equipment, I mean, we're talking GPS stuff, robotics, and drones and things like that. We have a lot of CAD. We start at basic CAD and try to go through the Civil 3D portion. And then again, the geodyssey, the study of the earth, and the GPS, along with boundary law. There is no other school in the state, any four-year institution, that does have the boundary law, or I think geodyssey for that matter, along with route layout, and then staking engineering projects.
And we also have, we have within that, four semesters of surveying and four semesters of CAD. So, CAD is computer-aided design. And so, if you think about any construction project, usually starts with a survey. And then from that, we download points, come up with a map, and then we work on the design part of it. And when the design is over, then they go out and stake it. And so, really, all aspects of construction, we have some kind of tie-in.
Okay. The reason we're together is because civil and land surveying are very, very close. And really, the whole programs for the two years are essentially the same except for these three classes. If you are in the civil engineering technology degree path, you would take the construction materials testing, the statics, and the water and wastewater. But if you were in the land surveying path, you would take geodetics, research, and planting, and boundary law. Ninety, I don't know if do I say this right now, but 90% of our students actually take both tracks. If there is a Dakota scholar or something on that path, those classes they have to pay for on their own. But we started the Civil Engineering Technology Program in 1988. The state changed its laws in 2011, 2010, 2011, where we needed more classes to go to the land surveying route. And so, that's kind of why we changed. But really, the programs are very, very similar. A lot of overlap. You know, this slide might be five years old, but hey, it's worth mentioning again, you know. It's land surveying, science. We won a national award. And so, I mean, you've got to look at that. And that's a pretty big thing for us, you know. If you look at the bottom down there, you're seeing, these are some big schools. University of Maine, University of Florida, you've got Troy University, which is in Alabama, and then University of Akron, Akron, Ohio. Anyway, you can look at the schools. There's a lot of big schools, a lot of big engineering schools. And there's this one little two-year program in South Dakota. Hey, you got it in. That's why we thought you got to see that again. Anyway, we won an award for lining up with NC's mission of promoting the profession and things like that. By the way, you know, everybody's heard of Board of Nursing. I mean, that's what you go through that licensing to become a nurse. NC's is the Board of Engineering. So, just thought I would put that out. Our land surveying program is the only program in the region. You know, Iowa had one. They struggled. They struggled, you know, for various reasons. And Nebraska, same. So, we're kind of like the only ones left. It's a program that we really want to do everything we can to keep it going. South Dakota, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
I try to have a lot of slides for you to talk more. These are just our enrollment numbers. I don't know if you have any questions about them. We, our enrollment numbers are just a little bit different than most programs just because one person comes in and starts, and they say, "I want to do civil." And then while they're in there, they decide to do both or the other way. And so, we don't like to look at our enrollment numbers. We kind of like to look at our graduation numbers. So, when you see a number like, "Well, we have four returning students, but nine graduated," it's because they're dual majors. So, that's kind of where those numbers come from. And then also on here, we have placement. So, this is true of most of Southeast Tech's programs, I would say. But 100% placement. Pretty sure if you drive home tonight, you're going to see some type of road construction. And so, most people say, "Ugh, road construction." We're like, "Woohoo, road construction." But anyway, we just, I passed a huge infrastructure bill. And so, we're excited and there's jobs and jobs to come. So, lots of people looking for our students.
What students do when they go to work, you can kind of look at, you know, some of the different places they can go to work. Like Beth said, you know, it's in the construction industry. So, you've got the construction inspection people out there, the testing. Somebody has to do the testing. Somebody's got to do the drawing and estimating and things like that. And again, some of that stuff does cross over. But in land surveying, while somebody's responsible for boundary work, somebody's responsible for the topographic map, somebody's responsible for the, you know, coming up with the easements and the plats and the research and things like that. So, that's where our students go to work.
So, that can be for a contractor for cities. So, the city engineering department hires lots of our technicians, county, state, federal agency. And then there are a lot of private consulting engineering firms or surveying firms that hire our students. And then any geotechnical firm, also our students could go to work for.
Earlier, I mentioned that South Dakota changed its laws in 2010. And what they came up with is said, "Hey, you know, we don't care what degree you have as long as it's, you know, as long as you have these 24 credits or these eight classes." And so, there's eight classes that the South Dakota Board does require. We are the only school that does provide all eight of those classes in South Dakota. I'm not going to mention them off because I'd probably forget one anyway. So, but anyway, our students are able to take a professional exam upon graduation at the, you know, and then work under a registered land surveyor for another seven years. So, that's a long time to become a, well, then another exam, and then to become a professional land surveyor. So.
Does that add complications with, you know, like you've seen in the press about the real estate of Fraser that they had to work under with Fraser, and that was leading to not as many passing and coming into the market? Has that been an impediment for land surveying?
You know, I can't really say exactly, but I'll tell you where the problems are. The problems are, we're running out of land surveyors. The other problem is, you have to work under a land surveyor. And that land surveyor has to be in that office. You can't work for somebody who's a land surveyor in Colorado and work for that same company in Sioux Falls. That doesn't work. So, I don't, you know, I can't say that.
Are people leaving the program early because of the job market too?
No, I don't think so. I think, I don't see that at all because you've got to make it through the end just to even be able to take that exam. You got to finish the courses. And it's a pretty rigorous program. I don't know, if you quit early, you know, to say, "I'm going to get a job," well, I just don't think you're ready for your job. I think we're going to finish up here by saying this. And again, probably this is not a big deal to anybody, but it's a big deal to us. So, last year, we had seven people, seven students at the end, sign up for a fourth class, is called a fourth extra class. And it was called Preparing for the FS Exam. It's a prep course. Anyway, seven people enrolled, seven people finished, and all seven of those people passed. Now, why are you saying, "Well, that's not a big deal. They should"? Well, wait a minute. 26 states require a four-year degree. This is the same test in New York, in California, in South Dakota. Same test. Same test, if you've got a two-year degree or a four-year degree. We had 100% passing, the national average. And there's a lot of four-year programs who don't see 100%. Now, hey, if we had to come back here next year, I don't think, we probably wouldn't have 100%, but hey, we do this here, so we have to tell you.
I just wanted to address your question too. I think sometimes in the construction programs that a lot of times contractors want to pull students away.
Right, right.
We have huge support from our industry, and we're really training them on software and survey equipment. And so, our, the people that employ our students usually send them to school.
To stay and then finish that.
Right, instead of trying to pull them away. So, we're very thankful for that.
Hello. I'm Brett Grinkmeyer. I'm the Architecture Engineering Technology Faculty at Southeast Tech. And I have 21 years' experience in the industry, working as an architect, and 11 years as an educator, although this is my second year at Southeast Tech. And so, yeah, so who are our students? So, we have a lot of the same, you know, we have a lot of the traditional students. That's probably the majority of our students are the traditional students coming out of high school. But we get students from Iowa, Minnesota, Nebraska, South Dakota. So, we get a lot of students from a lot of very different places. And some of, a lot of our students are transfer students. So, we've gotten students from four-year colleges that they maybe did a year at a four-year school, and they kind of felt like, "This is really not for me, and this is kind of, I want kind of a change." And so, we get a lot of students who are in that situation. And then there's the non-traditional students that you have where they're kind of looking, they were in a career for, you know, a number of years and just want to change, you know. And some of them come in with a bachelor's degree or some sort of degree from a university or something like that. So, we do have like a lot of students who are non-traditional looking for just advancements in their career or just changing careers. And then what do students with the Architecture Engineering Technology Program learn? So, they, some of the things that they learn is communication. When you're doing drawings, it's basically, you're doing a lot of drafting. And so, drafting, are you creating drawings? But those drawings actually are a means of communication, right? You have to communicate ideas. You have to communicate technical information to contractors. So, communication, learning to communicate in both writing and drawing, in speech, and things like that are very important. And also, of course, creating technical documents. By that, we mean kind of construction documents, something for construction and permitting. And then learning relevant codes and regulations. So, it's good to know the, you know, Sioux Falls zoning codes, the building codes, the residential code, commercial code, things like that. So, we do a lot of stuff with that. And then analyzing the financial implications of materials and systems. So, we have classes in construction estimating, where students will, you know, take projects and do estimations of costs of construction and things like that, along with all the ins and outs of that. outs of that. And then differentiate and consider the implications of design of various building materials and assemblies. So, students get to learn about, you know, what is a two-by-four? Is a two-by-four is not exactly two inches by four inches? And because we learned about wood, steel, all sorts of construction materials and things like that. And then also collaborate with others, which is a very important one, because in the workforce, you know, you're not a lone wolf. You're working in teams and in groups with people. So, learning to collaborate, communicate with each other and with other people and work as a team is kind of, is a very important part of what they learn. And also, these images here that I have on there, this is some of the student, student work on some of the projects that we've done in the past. So, what do, what do architecture and engineering technology students do? So, one of the things they do is they learn the fundamentals of the drafting industry. They learn to use BIM and CAD software. BIM is a type of software. It's building information modeling. And so, there, you're building instead of 2D flat drawings, we're building three-dimensional models that have walls and furniture and roofs and structural elements in those. And so, the students are kind of, that's kind of the latest technology in drafting. And so, that's what the students use. And then create technical drawings for commercial and residential projects. So, technical drawings like floor plans, elevations, sections, things like that. And then learn the properties and attributes of construction materials. So, they're just learning about different construction materials and how those materials kind of go together in systems, like wall systems and roof systems. And then they, one of the projects that's really kind of an exciting one for the students is the students actually get to design their own building, a commercial building. It's a visitor's center, and so, the students kind of sketch, and they go from sketches all the way to building a three-dimensional model of floor plans like this one here. And then network with others in the architecture, engineering, and construction industry. We have a student chapter of the Home Builders Association, and so, a lot of our architecture and construction management students are in that group, and we have people from the construction industry come in and talk to the students and kind of tell them a little bit about, educate them a little bit about the industry. And then, and then develop the skills to help them meet the workforce needs of the region. And so, this, this region needs a lot of, a lot of drafters right now, because there's a lot of, a lot of construction going right now. And then, so, architecture, engineering, and technology careers. So, so some of the careers that they could go into is a CAD drafter working for an engineering firm, an architecture firm, even a construction, construction company. A lot of construction companies now, we're doing, before the, before the project is actually built, they're actually building it on computer virtually, so that they can find mistakes and errors and things like that before you actually go into construction, because it's a lot harder to fix something that's built than, than to do it and simulate that with a computer. So, we're just, so a lot of our students are going to work for, in the construction industry. Estimating, BIM coordinator, which is just a, you know, BIM is that software we've talked about. Project managers, building inspector, so you could work for the city as a plans inspector or a construction inspector or a construction manager. Where are architecture, engineering students employed? So, these are just kind of a sample of some of the companies around here. TSP and Co-Cat, Co-Cat is actually a senior addition over here. TSP, these are architecture firms. West Plains Engineering, they're a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineer. Scott's Lumber, so a lot of lumber companies, they supply trusses for the residential construction industry. So, they need CAD operators to draw up the trusses before they're actually manufactured. And then Home Builders, Architecture Incorporated is another architecture, and Rise Structural is a, is a structural engineering Yeah, and then here's some of our, our enrollment information. It shows the infield placement rate is 80%, but I imagine by now it's probably about 100%. I get probably two, two emails a month from somebody who's looking for somebody in the, in the drafting engineer in the field. And majority of my students currently are, are working part-time as a drafter in the, in the industry right now, and we'll have a job ready for them by the time they graduate.
I just wanted to say really quickly, we're so fortunate to be next to Jefferson High School. And so, this semester Brett has a student, high school student, and she is a senior going kind of through his program. So, she'll be able to finish one year after she graduates. So, that's been good.
She's like one of my best students, too. She's doing better than most people.
We're hoping that we'll just continue to grow with all the programs there with that location, so.
Huge.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Schmidt. I'm the newest member of the team here. I just started a month ago, so. You can say my experience at teaching at Southeast Tech is about point one. I do have eight years of industry experience, however. That's one of the reasons they selected me to be a faculty member here. I believe in the SDC mission of providing real-world experience instructors to the students, and I believe it's very beneficial for the students. Who are our students, pretty much the exact same slide as everyone else. We do have a pretty even mix of traditional students coming right out of high school, transfer students coming from bachelor's programs, and non-traditional students. I'm actually a graduate from Southeast Technical College. It was institute at the time. And the reason I went there, because it definitely filled the need for me to change careers, and given that I had a family, I was willing to travel. And it was a great experience for me, and it's just really exciting to be back and an instructor at the school. So, what our students learn in the Mechanical Engineering Technology Program? They learn how the manufacturing environment works. They learn how to draw, working drawings, 3D models and assemblies. So, it's kind of like what Brett was saying. We're, we essentially learn a form of communication between a design and how a product is manufactured. You have the designers, and that's the main skill we're teaching in the engineering program. They all get to experience reverse engineering, so they, they get to take things apart and put them back together. Maybe that just sounds like fun, but we make sure that it's a lesson about everything. There's always tolerance issues, and each student learns how to work together, and they get creative ideas from each of these different experiences that we have set up for them. They learn to design parts with manufacturing in mind. So, anybody can design something, but that something may not be able to be built. And so, we, we teach through certain experiences how to imagine the limitations of the manufacturing capacity and how that informs what you're designing. We do a lot of things in 3D printing. You can see the picture of those gears there. Those are all 3D printed. With 3D printing, there is very few limitations as to what you can do. But typical manufacturing in South Dakota, every form of manufacturing has its own limitations, and the students need to be aware of that and informed of when they design a part, can this part be manufactured? They do a lot of learning about different types of materials and what materials and processes are to be used for certain So, we, our students create 3D models. So, we have pretty much the latest software. You could say state-of-the-art. It's pretty amazing. It's better than what we had at work. So, they learn the software. We actually teach them more than one. We don't really have the benefit of architectural students that they pretty much have one software that everybody uses. So, in South Dakota, there's one primary software. It's called SolidWorks that probably 50% of manufacturing companies use. But then after that, there's Autodesk Inventor and a software called Creo. So, we try to give them a taste of different software so that they can feel confident going into whatever job, that they can use the software that the companies locally are using. So, we use 3D printing technology to make their designs. So, when they design something, they make it. So, typically speaking, this is a teachable moment when they're making assemblies where parts have to fit together. In the computer world, a lot of times, things fit perfectly, as they should, because they designed them. But when you make them, even with 3D printers, you find out that stuff doesn't always work how you intended it to. So, we get to troubleshoot those types of issues. We build physical prototypes as well as 3D printed prototypes. One of the group projects that they do is build a trebuchet. So, makes it exciting for the students. So, it's a functioning trebuchet. We only shoot apples, though, so it's nothing scary. But we also learn to create and analyze data to evaluate production methods. So, this would be essentially looking at data through standard deviation charts, saying, "This is how you know that we're making good parts, and this is how you know we're making bad parts." So, the typical career that an MET student would have locally would be as a CAD drafter. So, that would be typically somebody who is taking, taking designs from an engineer and then detailing the drawings for manufacturing. A mechanical designer, which is approximately the same thing as a mechanical engineer. That was my job. I worked at Spartan Motors. I designed fire trucks. So, I was essentially a project manager for about 50 fire trucks a year. So, I would take a fire truck from design through the production stages until the customer was accepting of the project. So, a lot of students will end up in a role like that, especially here in South Dakota. They could also be a manufacturing engineer technician, which would be somebody who would work more closely with the production line, designing the equipment that makes the products. And so, if you imagine an assembly line, like say, for example, Dactronics, they more than likely use robots or conveyor belts or different type of machinery in the process of making their product. So, they would be somebody involved in designing that equipment, laying out facilities for optimum use. And also, quality engineering technician, which sometimes they can overlap, but in a larger company, that would be somebody who is evaluating the product that they're making at different stages of the process of manufacturing and saying, "Yes, we're on track. We're making good parts. We will continue to make money if we make parts of this quality at this percent." And, or no, our parts are not needing our specifications anymore. What's going on? We need to fix this problem. So, we're lucky and fortunate to have a pretty awesome, a great place for manufacturing in South Dakota. Maybe it's like the hidden side of South Dakota. But a lot of companies here that specialize in either custom or short-run manufacturing all seem to like South Dakota. Coincidence, Spartan is the one on the top here. They're a fire truck manufacturer. Rosenbauer is also a fire truck manufacturer. I know for sure at Spartan, we have Southeast Tech students there currently, one on internship, design tanks is very custom, they're like downtown Sioux Falls. Diamond Mowers, they're on the north side. Tiger Mowers, they're practically a neighbor here. Twin City Fan. There's many businesses basically that would and do use, hire our students when something's like. Here's a chart of our retention rate. From what I understand, it is typically always 100%. So, if you have any questions for the mechanical program in particular or anyone else that's already presented?
Any questions? Any?
No questions. I would just say, a couple of you made the point of the education that's provided at SDC is right up there with the education that they would receive at any other four-year kind of engineering institution. And so, I think that's something to be very proud of. And, you know, there are some, there are some students who have that technical gift where they can, they're good at that, maybe math and science, but it's that English or the, you know, kind of those generals that might be more of a struggle for them or those other classes they would have to take to look for a four-year degree. And so, it's a great option for them to be able to be hands-on and get in the field quicker to come to Southeast and really have that support from all of those different businesses who rely on you guys for your quality graduates, too. So, good work and keep working hard in recruiting students and filling our workforce needs that we have in Sioux Falls, whether it's our lovely road construction or, you know, you think, you see building permits all the time for commercial and residential and whatever, and so, there's definitely a need for these jobs. And so, keep working so that we can keep going.
How hard is it to keep up with, I'm sorry?
No, you're fine.
How hard is it to keep up technological wise? I mean, is it, like, I would imagine it just kind of?
I'm going to take that one. I teach surveying. When I first started, I started with a transit, and that's just a, it's pretty basic stuff. And now, we're using robotics. We're using drones. We're using GPS with satellites and everything. I couldn't do it if I didn't work in the industry every summer. I just, I couldn't have been able to keep up. So, that's how I do it. I know that's not common, but I don't know how, it is very difficult to keep up.
You guys are doing a great job, and it's just fun to see the placement. It's obviously adding value to these students to go out into the workforce at a higher level. And I know we're adding student supports always, so when we're looking at retention and so forth, just keep pushing on that. And I hope that Steve in Williamson's looking at all these employers' names and hitting them up to get, build Dakota scholarships out of them so that we can add them to the list. So, thank you for all you do for Southeast Tech. Really appreciate it. Do you have a motion to acknowledge the engineering technology programs report?
Second. I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That is approved. Thank you very much. Onto Rich. Oh, no, we have another report before him. Accessibility Services is over. I'm sorry about that.
You thought she was going to get out of it?
No. I'm really sorry. I knew that we had four, and I just went right back next.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. I'm Megan Fisher, Vice President for Enrollment Management. And in our student success area, come on up, Nadine. We have our student success advisors, and each one, as you know, has a care unit. And so, today, Nadine Jirdy, who is a student success advisor and also our accessibility services coordinator, is going to give you an update on her care unit.
Perfect. Well, good afternoon. Thank you for having me this afternoon. As Megan said, I am Nadine Jirdy. I have been with Southeast Tech since last August, serving as a student success advisor. And this July, I officially took over as our accessibility services coordinator. So, wanted to provide you guys with an update this afternoon of what we've been doing to make progress in accessibility services as well as some of our upcoming goals for the office. One of the big things that we did in this last year around June or July is we officially changed, changed the name of our office from Disability Services to Accessibility Services. This was a pretty strategic move so that we could take the stigma away from disability as a barrier for students in education and focus instead on us trying to provide access to all of our students through their accommodations to ensure that they can participate in their classrooms and feel like they can learn as any other student would within that setting. So, the purpose of our office overall is to provide that equal So the purpose of our office overall is to provide that equal access for our students with disabilities, both in their academic programs and in any of our co-curricular activities as well, so that we can ensure that they are provided those reasonable accommodations, not only for access, but in accordance with our ADA compliance as well as other federal compliance. We do have two full-time staff, myself as our accessibility services coordinator, and we have our academic resource and accommodations assistant, Ashley Vis, who just started on Monday. So just training into the role to assist with providing accommodations to students. Currently, we are serving about eighty students who are actively approved to receive accommodations. Eleven students right now are in some process of our application phase for accommodations. We do have a registration process for students as number one, students have to self-identify with our office. We don't know if students need accommodations unless they come forward to us seeking those. We have a lot of students from high school thinking that automatically transitions with them when they apply. So we have to kind of provide that education. And number two, because we do have to verify that the students that we serve have a documented disability in accordance with those laws. So we have, again, eleven students in that process right now in that registration. We've seen an increase in our student numbers from the spring. We're up five students. And we are up seventeen students from last fall in those numbers that we serve. That's been due to a lot of proactive processes we've been trying to implement and getting out there, letting students know about our services, letting all students at Southeast Tech know what our office does, being present for our academic advising and registration days to answer questions for students and parents and let them know we're there as a resource that they still can get accommodations in a college setting if they weren't familiar with that already. So we've definitely seen some growth this past year. Fifty percent of our students were renewed or began receiving their accommodations before that first day of class, which is a huge improvement in that we, we previously kind of were reaching out to students to renew their accommodations within that first week of class. Over the summer and in the spring, took on a little bit more of, again, that proactive process to reach out in advance so that day one, students knew what accommodations and faculty knew what accommodations students had in classes. And then send, by the first week of class, we had sixty-six percent of those students signed up. So seeing some growth in, in those numbers. We, we have students continually sign up for services throughout the semester. So we'll never have that hundred percent signed up by that first day, but seeing some growth in, in making sure our students are signed up as soon as they can be for that semester. Other progress we made this past year in 2021 is just more of that visibility of our office through participation in academic advising and registration days, in campus visit days, making sure that students, again, know what our office does, what our purposes are, and, and that students maybe who didn't think they would need our office can seek us out for support. We've increased our outreach to students over the last semester since spring as well, having more frequent contact throughout the semester to check in, checking in more with students and their student success advisors. We know that students with disabilities can be in that higher risk group for retention. So making sure that our students are succeeding, that they're using their accommodations, or that if there are issues, that we can help them self-advocate to resolve those problems if they feel they're not receiving their accommodations. Also more, again, that proactive student with current students and students that we don't serve yet potentially. We also revised our registration form for students to gather more pertinent information that we need for serving those students in our office. We did some updates to our website to make it more user-friendly. We created an online PDF version of our registration form so that people can fill it out directly without having to get a paper copy and send it in to us, make it a little more efficient. And then also updated our accommodation letters to provide more information to students and faculty about that accommodation process. We also increased the number of trainings in our collaboration with faculty and staff, making sure they understand the purpose of accessibility services as well as their role in the accommodations process. So each spring and fall semester, I have participated in our new faculty training to let them know what our office does, give them some understanding of accessibility accommodations training and our process for determining accommodations, as well as training on our document and digital accessibility. That's a huge trend right now is making sure that content we put out digitally is accessible for students. So we'll be continuing that training this spring with another series of how to make your content in your classes as accessible as possible. And finally, our goals for this upcoming year is to first increase our contact with local and regional high schools within the southeast region of South Dakota to get those students into Southeast Tech who might be interested, who may have a disability and have never thought about going to college before, or thought it was the right thing for them. For students who already know they want to come to Southeast Tech, to be involved in their I E P meetings or to let them know, you know, that they can continue receiving accommodations in that college setting. So increasing that outreach with special education teachers, counselors, students and their families. Part of that is that we will be hosting the 2022 Catch the Wave event at Southeast Tech. That is an event that coordinates with the Transition Services Liaison Project here in Sioux Falls and across the state to bring high school students with disabilities to our campus, let them hear from our office. Other disability services offices come from four-year colleges in the state, hear from students who are receiving accommodations about their experience in college, and just get that better feel that they can be at a technical college or a four-year college in our state as well. So that'll be on March 29th. We are also, again, finding new ways to increase that proactive contact with our students throughout the year to renew their accommodations in a faster fashion or to just troubleshoot any issues they have, just so that they also feel more comfortable coming to myself and to Ashley with any concerns or just if they need to talk through something or figure out more strategies for success, that we can be a part of that. And then again, increase our participation in new faculty trainings. If there's trainings that, that faculty want in their staff meetings each month, or if there's trainings they want as a larger group to be able to host those and be part of that, specifically with that digital and accessible documents training this spring. And then finally, to develop new and more efficient methods for tracking our current students and reporting data on students who work with accessibility services. Make sure that we can see everything going on with our students. Right now, we're using various different softwares to kind of track students and keep track of accommodation letters and those things. So just to make that process a little bit more efficient in the coming year. That's a wrap on everything I have. I've been very glad to be serving in this role and help provide access to students. So to open it to questions from any of you.
Well, it sounds like even though you're new here, you've been just hit the ground running. So just very excited about these, you know, offerings for students. My son, who's a junior in college, this is the first year we've had, he's totally deaf in one ear. And so we had to reach out to his school for accommodations and classes are still under a mask mandate at his school and he can't, he reads lips. And I, so I know how important these offices are to helping the students get what they need in the classroom when things aren't normal for them in that way. So I appreciate all the work you do to make that work.
Thank you.
Make them successful.
Yeah, and I can see as you bring high school students in, you know, sometimes parents become a little bit more hands-off when their students leave home.
Reluctantly.
Yes. I'm a senior myself. I'm really struggling with the hands-off thing. But I think, you know, students might come out and, like you mentioned, they might either maybe never had an accommodation in high school, or they did and they assume, or they don't know that that's something that can continue. And so I love the proactive approach of, what can we do to make you successful from day one? Instead of having to try to figure out and diagnose these things that the work has already been done. And so I think that's, that's awesome. I think that will help with the success of the student and ultimately their retention and hopefully graduation. Plus just a self-esteem and just a feeling good about being able to accomplish something and, and having an accommodation to help you get there is, there's nothing wrong with that. That's just what you need to have that same experience. And so it's a very important role. And as we get more and more students who have those different accommodations that they need, you know, I'm sure you guys will be creative in coming up with how you can assist them to, to help them to be successful in their chosen career path too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to acknowledge the accessibility services overview?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now it's your turn, Rich.
The one time, I actually have an audience and I'm limited on time. Since I normally empty the room, just very briefly, President Mickelson and members of the board just hit a couple highlights on the first quarter financials. Well, there's a lot of reports. I'll talk and hit buttons at the same time. Not gonna take a deep dive into the, into the details, just some comments, kind of working backwards from the various enterprise funds. If you spend any time with it and you look at the childcare fund, you notice that the revenue's up a little bit as compared to last year as you look at that. That's some federal support that's coming in under the CCR, SSA funding. Some of it's support to students, some of it's the support of the operations. That's why you're seeing a little bit of increase there on the revenue side. When you get into the food service fund, same type of thing. Operations this fall are much different, closer to normal than what they were last fall. So you see that reflected in that revenues as we get started. Bookstore, pretty much same, same. If you lay the two first quarter reports from this year next to last year, you've not seen a lot of differences there. But what I really wanted to take a closer look on is on the post-secondary fund and really wanted to focus on some of our revenue components. The three major ones that account for eighty-two, eighty-five percent of our overall revenue streams. So as we look at tuition, we look at fees and we look at our state revenues. And the point of this is not to be sounding an alarm, but to let the board and campus know that it's on the radar. It's something that we need to start having some conversations about. When we look at the decline enrollment coming into this fall, we look at some of the, the stopouts and determinations. Don't know what's gonna happen in the spring, but this is a, a real quick look at our credits and how they compare to this time last year. So there's no longitude, no, it's just looking quarter to quarter. What did we see? Where did we expect to end up at the end? So when you look down in the orange chart under the FY twenty-two credits and you look at the two big numbers on the bottom, you see the six point six million is what we're kind of projected based on what we saw in FY twenty-one. Same type of thing. You compare that to FY twenty-two. We built a budget on seven point one million. So there's a, there's a deficit or a shortfall at this point that may or may not be realized. Lot of moving parts to it, a lot of things yet to happen over the next eight to nine months. But again, it is on the radar. Tuition or fees follows coming, the same thing. A lot of it's credit-based. Why we're not quite seeing the same amount of differential there is related to program-related fees. Cause that's based on enrollment within programs and not necessarily across-the-board credits. So while we're down in the, the credit type of aspect of it that applied to all of those credits, we're seeing some ahead-of-budget projections on those program-specific fees. When we get into the state aid side of it, that's sitting pretty close. There is a credit element to it when we look at the tuition buy-down. That's only ten dollars of credit that we receive. So it's not a huge impact. So as we look at our, our state aid, we're, we're aligning fairly close there. You're seeing seven, two, eight, four versus seven, three, seven, four. So again, not a huge difference. But I think when we look at where we're sitting at overall, and again, I, I wouldn't go to trial court with this level of evidence, but it, it's a, a starting point to take a look at. So you look at those three major revenue components versus what was budgeted. And if you were to project it out to June thirtieth, there's a potential shortfall of just under nine hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred fifty-five thousand. So that, that's one piece of the puzzle. The other side of it is, is we start to look at our expenditures. So you do the same type of thing. You start to look at where are we at this quarter compared to last year in that first quarter. You, you can see that very close as a percentage of the overall budget, twenty-three point eight one percent last year, twenty-three point four three percent. And just to back up a second, I'm excluding the capital in this conversation. This is just the operating types of components. So again, a high-level analysis, looking, where were we at first quarter last year? How did we end up? And if, if you look at the very far right bottom number, you see a deficit or a, or a shortfall there just under twenty-four thousand dollars. So the indicator at this point is we're on track expenditure-wise. So it's gonna take some concentrated effort as we head into the next, like I said, eight months. But this is also foundational as we look into next budget cycle as well. What does spring hold? As we talked today, I said the, the history isn't on our side in terms of enrollment growth coming in the spring. I think in my eighteen years here, that's happened one time where we've actually saw an increase in credits in the spring over the fall term. But it, it emphasizes the importance of retention, emphasizes the importance of recruiting and marketing. There's some emphasis that's gonna have to be placed on our expenditure stream as well. So whenever you build budgets, you always look at the things you have to do, the things you should do and the things you want to do. And so we'll start having conversations about where can we tap on the brakes? Where can we slow that a little bit? And continue to monitor our revenue streams and see where we have. So I did want to draw that to your attention rather than taking that deep dive into all of the line item details there. Sometimes when you're comparison budget to budget, if you don't go to this level, it just looks like, okay, yeah, I'm kind of consistent with where we're aligning with what the budget. So the budget reflects some of those changes coming into this year. So you would expect to kind of see the percentages lining up. But again, it's a, it's an awareness. I want the board to know it is on our radar and we'll continue to have discussions on campus about some strategies. Any questions that I'd be happy to try and answer?
No, obviously have to look at things and hopefully we can work on enrollment and retention as you've stated before. And as we have seen nationwide, higher learning numbers have been decreasing. And luckily, Southeast Tech has not been at the level that even our state four-year university.
Right. And we've been fortunate on the state funding side as well that that, that's held consistent. The federal funds that are out there unfortunately are reimbursement-based. It's not, there's a little bit of an option to possibly recover some lost revenue. But you take a deep dive into that and you, you look at the mechanism that you use in terms of credits. And yeah, I can see declines in specific programs, but we're up in others. So you start looking at that and you're not seeing a huge differential. Like as you speak to other schools with that twenty percent, twenty-five percent drop, we're, we're seeing these minimalist types of amounts. And so that's a challenge. I think we're challenged. Probably don't have to go very far down the street to see help-wanted ads. We've seen that and I've talked about this in the past of how that average credits that a student is taking, we're continuing to see a decline in that from maybe when I started in the early two thousands and being in that sixteen-credit range on a F T E basis down to maybe twelve, thirteen. So some of that dual enrollment, some of it's taking a little bit longer to complete. So there, there's a lot of things in the environment that, that we're looking at and focusing on and, and trying to address. And it's always a challenge when you're mid-stream to make changes. A lot of these things have already underway. You just kind of have to write them out, do what you can. But again, I think it lays a foundation for where we head into the FY twenty-three budget as we start to look at some of the other indicators that we're using on potential enrollment.
Singan, do I have a motion to acknowledge the first quarter finance report?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Who cares? Anything else? Singan, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.